Reconvene the meeting of December 11th, 2012. And we shall have roll call.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present. Councilmember Hen is on his way.
Hen said he would be a little bit late. And I know, yes, I do look like I need a booster chair. Okay. We will have the pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Rosansky this final time, followed by the invocation from Reverend Peter Haynes of Saint Michael and All Angels Episcopal Church.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, our presentations of gifts to our outgoing council member, Rosansky. Is the representative from John Campbell's office here? No, well then, there's a certificate of special congressional recognition from Councilman Campbell's office. I mean, Congressman Campbell's office.
I don't think he ever was a councilman.
Which I will present to you.
Thank you.
And, all right, and then we have remarks.
Can we take some more pictures with me in them now?
No, no, sorry. You missed the moment. Councilman Rosansky, would you like to say a few words?
Oh, I didn't realize that was that part of the agenda, but I've never turned down an opportunity to say a few words. Meaningful words, oh, thank you, Russ. Russ has been my acolyte here in the last two years, and now I have to, as I'm leaving council, I have to set him off on his own, which he did quite ably, or ably, at our earlier meeting today. You know, I know we're excited to move on to the remainder of our agenda tonight, and one thing I've learned during my tenure on the city council is that no one wants to listen to the old guy. Wow. I knew I was gonna do this. So I'll take a cue from the current mayor Nancy Gardner and try and keep my comments brief. Over the last several months, I've started this speech in my mind a thousand times, and when you don't know where to start, the best place is with thank yous. First and foremost are my wife Gina and my son Jonathan, who are here tonight with us. I, like my fellow council members, chose to enter public life because we have a passion to serve our community.
Want me to read it for you, Steve?
I think I do. All right. "We sacrifice our time, our energy, and our resources willingly. Our family members, although assuredly supportive, are sometimes thrust into the maelstrom involuntarily. I want to thank my family for their love, their patience, their support, and their sacrifice while I pursued my passion." Next, I want to thank my friends, some of who are out here in the audience tonight. Actually, I hope you're all my friends in the audience, although I probably voted against something over the last nine years that you weren't happy with. But next, I want to thank my friends who have supported me all along. They've supported me with their advice, sometimes well-received and sometimes not, their time and their resources, but most importantly, I think that they try to keep me humble, which is sometimes not easy to do. Many of you may not know it, but the city council directly hires only three people: the city manager, the city attorney, and the city clerk. Although the occupants of these positions have changed over the last nine years that I have served, they have all contributed to my success. Former city manager Homer Bloudow, who's with us tonight, and current city manager Dave Kiff are two of the most hard-working and supportive individuals I have known. Homer nurtured me while I was learning the ropes, and Dave has been an exceptional leader for our city during the hardest of times. When I first got onto the city council, we were thick with councilmember attorneys: Bromberg, and Heffernan, and Ridgway, and myself. Since then, I've worked with a number of city attorneys who also deserve thanks. These include Bob Burnham, and Robin Clausen, David Hunt, and our current city attorney, to our left here, or my left, Aaron Harp. They have all provided sound legal advice, and although we didn't always agree on the law, I have appreciated their wisdom and their dedication to the city. Now that I'm leaving, there will be no longer any councilmembers who are attorneys, none of the other six here, and Tony's not an attorney, but the rest of you will definitely -- they're happy, I know. The rest of you will need to keep a close eye on Aaron, though, because, you know, sometimes he gets out of line. One of the unsung heroes of the city is the city clerk, who's sitting over there, or at least the current one. I've had the opportunity to work with two great ones, Levon Harkless and Leilani Brown. The city clerk and her staff work mostly behind the scenes to make sure that the city council has the resources we need to operate effectively. Most importantly, Levon and Leilani have always bugged me to have my annual FPPC filings in on time, and lately have kept a Walstock candy drawer that I could raid in the city clerk's office, so I'm appreciative of that. They know I like a good chocolate candy bar. But none of what I have accomplished could have happened without the city staff. In reality, they run the city and have made great things happen here in the past, as I am confident they will continue to do so in the future. I also want to thank most, or especially thank, my councilmember colleagues, who sit up here with me today, and the ones that are not here any longer, the ones that have already left council, like Bromberg, and Webb, and I'll even thank Dick Nichols, although we had plenty of run-ins over the past, and John Heffernan, and I know I'm forgetting a few Gary Adams, Todd Ridgway, if I haven't mentioned him already. When I think about all the elected officials I've come in contact with over the last nine years, I can honestly say that these men and women who sit on either side of me are amongst the most qualified and competent individuals in office, bar none. In some ways, they are like a second family. Sure, we had our differences, but at the end of the day, we all pulled together to make great things happen in Newport Beach. Lastly, and probably most importantly, I want to thank -- I could do it, I'm gonna do it. I want to thank the residents of Newport Beach. I don't know, for an emotional guy, I'm all teared up, for allowing me to serve them. Service is a privilege, not a right. I'm actually, I'm actually still overwrought over the last meeting. It got pretty emotional.
I think I can help you here, just pretend you're negotiating a development agreement.
Oh, yeah, oh, you guys are dead meat now. Okay. Thank you, I needed that. Actually, a few of them are out here tonight, and they'll attest to that. By electing me twice to the city council, you've allowed me to do something very important to me, to lead a life of significance. Some of you may have heard this story before, but I'd like to tell it again. Back in 2003, before I was on council, my wife and I were driving home from a weekend vacation, and I told her that I felt like I wasn't living up to my potential. As any good wife would do, she tried to point out to me all my successes, and, you know, but despite that, I told her I felt that there was something more that I could or that I should be doing. The conversation didn't last long, but as luck would have it, the very next day, someone handed me a copy of the Daily Pilot, and the headline said, "Proctor resigns Newport Beach City Council." A door opened, and with the support of residents like you, who wrote over 50 letters in support of my appointment, the council chose me to be Proctor's replacement. My years on council have been the most challenging, stimulating, and invigorating of my life. Development agreement, development agreement. I've had to use all of the skills I learned up to the time of my appointment, and many learned since then, to fulfill my duties as a councilmember and represent the residents of Newport Beach. Most importantly, my service has allowed me to fill the void I was feeling and live a life of significance. It's almost done, don't worry. Lately, people ask, "Did you attain the goals that you set out to achieve when you got onto the city council?" And if I look back, I had many goals, some big and some small. I don't know if I'm gonna get to talk about this later, so I'll talk about it now. Tonight, one of them was achieved by the opening of this new city council chamber and the soon-to-be opening city hall that's behind you. Two years ago, I told city manager Dave Kiff, and then Public Works Director, who's, I don't even know what your title is now, Steve, Assistant City Manager, whatever, he got a promotion, he got a promotion, it was a promotion, Steve Batum, that I had to have at least one meeting in the new city hall council chamber. And there are times when I thought that that wasn't gonna happen. I thought that I was gonna be like, and I hate to use a biblical reference, because I'm not known for that, but I thought I was gonna be like Moses, who got to look across the River Jordan, but not, didn't get to cross into the promised land. I told them that even if they had to set up a card table and seven chairs in the middle of this room, we were gonna have a meeting. But as you can see, it did happen, and I thank them as well as the rest of the city staff, our architects, Bolin Siewinski-Jackson, and our project manager, who's on here tonight on crutches, I think. They accused me of breaking his legs if he, because he didn't get the thing done on time, but I told him, I said, "I wouldn't do that, I'd just twist your arm a little, but never break your legs." But there is in fact one goal I had above all others. I've spent years connected to scouting. I was a Cub Scout, a Weeblow, and a Boy Scout, and for many years, I served as an adult leader with PAC 33 and Troop 90 here in Newport Beach. And one thing scouting taught me is to leave it better than you found it. And that, that has been my overreaching goal, to leave the city better than I found it. Time will tell, but I believe that I have accomplished that goal. Financially, the city is in great shape, with over, almost $100 million in reserves after weathering the toughest economic storm since the Great Depression. Over the last nine years, the city has seen infrastructure improvements throughout our city. We built a new fire station, a senior citizen center, the Oasis Center, multiple parks, community centers in Santa Ana Heights and Newport Coast, undergrounded utilities, re-signalized street intersections throughout the city, and dredged the Upper Bay Rhine Channel and the harbor. And after multi-year efforts, we updated our general plan and improved our city charter. We have streamlined our city staff and expenditures without sacrificing city services, and the best is yet to come, with the completion of the new civic center, the construction of Sunset Ridge and Marina Parks, the proposed community center and police station in West Newport, which I'm gonna be on you guys to make sure happens, the repurposing of the old city hall property, the continued dredging of the harbor, and the implementation of the Thailand's Management Plan and Newport Beach Revitalization Plans that touch almost every area of the city. Please don't think that I take credit for these wonderful achievements. It has been a collaborative effort of the city council, the city staff, and of course, our residents. I only hope that my contribution has played a small part in their fruition. So as I end my term on council, and I turn the reins over to Tony, who's, where's Tony? Tony's sitting right, how year can that be? The guy's right up front. Can't wait. And to my council colleagues, I thank you all for allowing me the privilege of serving you. Thank you.
You learn a lot about your fellow council members in closed session. There are no cameras, there's no audience, and Steve and I weren't always on the same page, but I never, ever questioned his motives. He always felt that what he was doing, his position, was in the best interest of the city. And he also is the kind of person that, if he had an issue with you or a difference, he came right to you. You have a face-to-face conversation about it, and those two things I have really appreciated about you, Steve, so thank you for the opportunity to serve with you.
Thank you.
By the way, you're gonna have to raise your hands, because we don't have any way of doing it. Keith, I mean, Mayor Potem.
Well, Steve, you and I got on the wrong side on some issues, but let me say, your leadership on this council has been exemplary, and we're in this building tonight in great measure because of your determination and your work and your dedication to make that happen, and you should be as proud as you possibly could be for that accomplishment, because this is going to be a structure and a facility and a real civic center that people are going to visit for generations, and you, more than anyone else, helped make that a reality, and you should take great credit for that. But I think the greatest legacy you're going to leave is when we dedicate Sunset Ridge Park, because that required just as much dedication, and it is so needed in your district to serve the youth sports and the recreation needs, and just to make it a more pleasant place to be. And that would not have happened either without your dedicated leadership to make that happen. And as Nancy alluded, you, not only do you get the measure of someone's character in closed session, but you also get the measure of their intellect. And I will just admit that Steve can do numbers in his head faster than I can, and we are going to miss his legal insights, which were very, very valuable to us as we did so many things. And he, along with Councilmember Selich, negotiated development agreements that will be worth ultimately hundreds of millions of dollars to the taxpayers and residents of this city, and those funds will be used to leave facilities that will serve generations of Newport Beach residents. And so, Steve, you should be very proud of that, and everybody in the city should be very proud of you for that accomplishment.
Thank you, Keith.
Councilman Selich?
Steve, it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve with you on this council and get to know you over the last seven and a half years. We always didn't see eye to eye on things. We were on the opposite side of the fence over this very facility, and yet, after long debate over that, we came together and worked as part of a team to help bring this facility to fruition. And, you know, that's just an example of the kind of ability that you've shown on this city council, that although you have strong opinions on things, and yet you're able to compromise and work together with the rest of the council, and I really appreciate that. And it's really been a pleasure working with you on these development agreements. I'm happy you didn't get that emotional in those meetings. I'm not sure. We would have seemed to be as tough as we were.
I think our hardest thing to decide was who's gonna be the good guy and who's gonna be the bad guy, so.
Well, we had a lot of fun in those meetings, and there's stories we can't tell, but I think we got the job done.
Thank you.
But it really has been a pleasure and an honor to get to know you, and I wish you the best in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Councilman Hen?
Steve, I was on the other side of this facility issue too, as you well remember, and I was really mad at you about that for a while. I'm not anymore. It's a great facility, you deserve so much credit for your leadership to make this all happen. And I'd have to say that you are a leading example of the really good way this council works together. We've been on the other side of issues, and on the same side of issues a lot, and we finish the issue, and it's forgotten. Doesn't make any difference who was on what side. Next issue comes up, it's all straight up, and we make a decision, and there's no grudges, there's no rethinking, retrading, or anything like that. And so, you've been a very, you've provided a great example for all of us as we've worked together. And as Ed has soldiered with you, I guess, on development agreements and other things, I feel like I've soldiered with you in the last couple of years on this Marina Rents issue.
That's one thing I'm not gonna miss.
That's not been such a happy warrior kind of thing, but nevertheless, it's the kind of thing that builds a bond, and so I truly appreciate having worked with you and your contributions to the city.
Thank you.
Councilman Hill?
Well, Steve, I'm the new kid for another 20 minutes on the council. Finally get to hand that over to somebody else. You took me in under your wing. You, I remember very clearly, my first council meeting, I walked in and sat down at the DS, and it was time to vote, and I looked up at all those buttons, and I had no idea what to do. You've been voting for me ever since, coming to thank you. We have, we've come down on the same side of issues, and we've come down on the other side of issues, but I will repeat that when someone asks me, "Is it good to be on the council?", my answer is, "It is, because it's good to be with the people I get to be with." And you helped that happen for me. So for that, excuse me, I am very appreciative, and it truly has been an honor to serve with you, and the insight that you bring is good. I think about it, that you taught me how to push the buttons on the council and the buttons on the staff, so.
Thank you.
Although he never succeeded in teaching you how to operate the lights.
Councilwoman Diggle?
Well, thank you for your service, and you have certainly helped move our city forward, and I hope that, I know for you, it was also a measure of personal fulfillment and satisfaction. So while you miss us here on Tuesday night, just think there's the Anaheim Duck Games.
Yeah, if they ever start playing again. Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you all. I'd just like to recognize the outgoing mayor of Irvine, Suzy Kang, came in to celebrate the opening of our new chamber. The city manager?
I had one thing representing staff, whenever we say goodbye to a council member, it's always a sad day. It's especially sad to leave, have councilmember Rosansky leave us, because he's been somebody that really has been involved in the day-to-day workings of the city ever since he started. And I talked about this meeting that we were fumbling with probably nine years ago, and Steve was part of that meeting as a new council member, and he took charge and really set a tone, I think, for how he takes charge of things. And you've just experienced a little bit of his soft side, and I wanted to talk a little bit more about that. I was hoping maybe somebody could put up that slide that I have.
I've got it.
Let's see. No, it's not bad. So, the other, the other thing Steve does, and this chokes me up, is his attention to fostering animals and adopting animals, and I don't want to forget that, because that is a really cool side of Steve, and one of those is adopted because of Steve. That's one of my dogs, and actually, a couple of my dogs, but I just, you need, I think that's a legacy that affected a lot of lives, certainly the canine ones and the feline ones, but a lot of people in this room, and pick-a-pet is, gets things picked, so those find good homes, and that's really cool about something that you cared about from day one. So, speaking from the staff, we're sad to see you go, we hope you stay involved in the community, we know you will, and wish you the best.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. All right, and now, we will proceed. Notice to the public?
The city provides a yellow sign-in card in order to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. And it's really been a pleasure working with you on these development agreements. I'm happy you didn't get that emotional in those meetings. I'm not sure. We would have seemed to be as tough as we were.
I think our hardest thing to decide was who's gonna be the good guy and who's gonna be the bad guy, so.
Well, we had a lot of fun in those meetings, and there's stories we can't tell, but I think we got the job done.
Thank you.
But it really has been a pleasure and an honor to get to know you, and I wish you the best in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Councilman Hinn?
Steve, I was on the other side of this facility issue too, as you well remember, and I was really mad at you about that for a while. I'm not anymore. It's a great facility, you deserve so much credit for your leadership to make this all happen. And I'd have to say that you are a leading example of the really good way this council works together. We've been on the other side of issues, and on the same side of issues a lot. And we finish the issue, and it's forgotten. Doesn't make any difference who was on what side. Next issue comes up, it's all straight up, and we make a decision, and there's no grudges, there's no rethinking, retrading, or anything like that. And so, you've been a very, you've provided a great example for all of us as we've worked together. And as Ed has soldiered with you, I guess, on development agreements and other things, I feel like I've soldiered with you in the last couple of years on this Marina Rents issue.
That's one thing I'm not gonna miss.
That's not been such a happy warrior kind of thing, but nevertheless, it's the kind of thing that builds a bond, and so I truly appreciate having worked with you and your contributions to the city.
Thank you. Bye.
Councilman Hill?
Well, Steve, I'm the new kid for another 20 minutes on the council. Finally get to hand that over to somebody else. You took me in under your wing. You, I remember very clearly, my first council meeting, I walked in and sat down at the dais, and it was time to vote, and I looked up at all those buttons, and I had no idea what to do. You've been voting for me ever since, come to thank you. We have, we've come down on the same side of issues, and we've come down on the other side of issues, but I will repeat that when someone asks me, "Is it good to be on the council?", my answer is, "It is, because it's good to be with the people I get to be with." And you helped that happen for me. So for that, excuse me, I am very appreciative, and it truly has been an honor to serve with you, and the insight that you bring is good. I think about it, that you taught me how to push the buttons on the council and the buttons on the staff. Thank you.
Although he never succeeded in teaching you how to operate the lights.
Councilwoman Diggle?
Well, thank you for your service, and you have certainly helped move our city forward, and I hope that, I know for you, it was also a measure of personal fulfillment and satisfaction. So, while you miss us here on Tuesday night, just think there's the Anaheim Duck Games.
Yeah, if they ever start playing again. Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you all. I'd just like to recognize the outgoing mayor of Irvine, Suzy Kang, came in to celebrate the opening of our new chamber. The city manager?
I had one thing representing staff, whenever we say goodbye to a council member, it's always a sad day. It's especially sad to leave, have Councilmember Rosansky leave us, because he's been somebody that really has been involved in the day-to-day workings of the city ever since he started. And I talked about this meeting that we were fumbling with probably nine years ago, and Steve was part of that meeting as a new council member, and he took charge and really set a tone, I think, for how he takes charge of things. And you've just experienced a little bit of his soft side, and I wanted to talk a little bit more about that. I was hoping maybe somebody could put up that slide that I have.
Oh, no.
Maybe Leilani?
I've got it.
Let's see. No, it's not bad. So, the other thing Steve does, and this chokes me up, is his attention to fostering animals and adopting animals. And I don't want to forget that, because that is a really cool side of Steve, and one of those is adopted because of Steve. That's one of my dogs, and actually, a couple of my dogs. But I just, you need, I think that's a legacy that affected a lot of lives, certainly the canine ones and the feline ones, but a lot of people in this room, and pick a pet is, gets things picked, so those find good homes, and that's really cool about something that you cared about from day one. So, speaking from the staff, we're sad to see you go. We hope you stay involved in the community, we know you will, and wish you the best.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. All right, and now, we will proceed. Notice to the public?
The city provides a yellow sign-in card in order to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now's the time for the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar, item one and two, are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Councilmembers have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor and state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
All right, anyone, Councilwoman Diggle, anything to remove from the consent calendar?
None.
Councilman Hinn?
None, thank you.
Councilman Selich?
None.
Councilman Hill?
None, thank you.
Councilman Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Curry?
None, thank you.
Staff, anything to pull? Does anyone in the public wish to remove something from the consent calendar? Seeing none?
Move the adoption of the consent calendar, items one and two.
Second.
Oh, how do we do that? I can't remember now.
You have to bear with us as we test the new voting system for the first time, so...
Okay. There? There.
I was signed in. Oh, he did the same thing.
Okay. Little, can't we just raise our hands?
We had a bunch of people really work hard to get this to work today, so give it one more shot, then we can raise our hands.
Okay, so then I go?
Okay, so we have a few bugs to work out here. Yeah, mine's not working out.
All right.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
I know, yeah. Okay, can we just?
Yeah, you can.
All in favor? Raise your hand, please.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
We knew there'd be a few bugs, that's okay. All right, oh, public hearing? Who's handling this?
Madam Mayor? Thank you. This is a public hearing that we have set to initiate the two-step process for the city council to initiate the notification procedure to override the Airport Land Use Commission's determination that the Uptown Newport project is inconsistent with the airport environs land use plan. The city staff is recommending that the city council continue this public hearing until January 8th, year 2013, because your planning commission has not yet completed their deliberations and recommendations on the project. They have continued their public hearing to December 20th to 1:30 in the afternoon, and if they are finished with their recommendations, then the city council will be able to move forward with the notification procedure on January 8th.
All right, are any questions, staff? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for a motion.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. All right.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, public comments?
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Yeah, is the, is the microphone on? No, you pushed the thing there, yeah, maybe a little light.
Testing.
There.
Good. Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name's Ron Winship, I live in Corona Del Mar. I come here tonight to celebrate this first meeting of the city council and the new digs. Actually, it's a, it's to commemorate some people that have served this city for very many, many, many years, and kind of commemorate them, because we made a tremendous change from the old location to this one. I'm gonna mention some people's names, just to bring to your attention what the changes are that have been made in this city because of their effort. No laughing now, but Sid Soffer was one of the first guys to come up to this group of people and ask for some corrective action from people that were their public servants. Few years later, in fact, many years later, a young guy by the name of Brian Clarkson came to this dais and again asked for public servants to have a little corrective action. You don't need it all the time, we don't come here to visit all the time, but occasionally the people come to speak. I came here first time in 1971. It was an interesting time then, because our present governor, Jerry Brown, was a lot younger then, and he had a lady by the name of Adriana G. Anturco, who was his Caltrans boss. And she created the idea of having a freeway running from one end of California to the other, within sight of the coast of California. Well, obviously, it upset a lot of people here in Newport Beach, I was one of them, and we just didn't think that that was the right thing to do, and we were able to overturn that. Oddly enough, I, it was at the very same time, there was a conversation about dock pricing. That was in 1971, if you can imagine such a thing. There was a, I just happened to pull this on the web, because I thought it was interesting, but Doreen Marshall was the mayor at that time, and the talk was about the cans, about the docks, about the piers, about the whispers, and how much to charge for them. Ed Herth, Donald McGinnis, Howard Rogers, Myron Dolstall, and of course, our forever-loving Paul Reichoff, were all members of the people that thought about dock pricing, as now you guys are facing that issue coming up in the future. At any rate, I want to congratulate everybody. There is one other person that would be here if he could have been here, a wonderful person. We happen to know him and admire him greatly, and his name was Kevin Murphy. And Kevin was one of those guys that was just a real dude, and we really loved him, and we appreciate him almost as much as we appreciate Dave Kiff. But, having said that, thank you so much for what you do, and another, what, 42 years?
All right, thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, thank you very much for your time. My name's Jerry Wheeler, working here in Newport Beach. Having lunch with some friends on Newport Boulevard, walked out, fed the meter, came outside and kept a close eye to the time, realizing that I only had 45 minutes on the meter, came out in 46 minutes, realized that there was a parking tenant giving me a parking ticket. Smiled at him, said, "Thank you very much," not sure why I said "thank you," but I said "thank you." Walked over to the ticket, pulled it off the dash, thought about it some more and said, "Well, that's strange. I know I had 45 minutes on the meter, and wow, to be one minute late, one minute late and get a parking ticket." Means that that man had to be standing there at the meter, standing there, waiting for that to go red. But that's okay, I still thought to myself, "That's all right." Then I walk over, like I said, open the ticket, read it, and it's $58. $58 for a parking ticket in Newport Beach. I wasn't parked in the red, I wasn't double parked, I wasn't blocking an intersection. $58 for a parking ticket. $58. $58, I hope that, I don't know if anything will be done about this, but can we take a look at the fee structure of parking fees? It's ridiculous. $58 for a parking ticket. I just, I have no other words for it except for $58. I just, I'm lost for words. I could understand if I was parked in a red zone, maybe it's $100. If I had parked illegally overnight, or street sweeping, you know, some kind of thing like that. But just to simply, and you know, the guy, the meter maid, excuse the expression "maid", but he can't tell how long I, you know, the sign was red, although I do think he was standing there waiting for it to turn red, because I was only one minute late. But $58? $58 for a ticket? $58, I mean, doesn't that seem a little, a little excessive? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there other public comment?
Madam Mayor, distinguished city council members, speaking of 1971, my name is Philip Bettencourt, and I was the Civic Center Project Manager that year for, well, an ill-fated building program that had a magnificent architect, a great site across the street, and it did not come to pass. So this is a very special moment to be in these chambers here tonight, and I salute the Site Selection Committee, the Building Committee, the Finance Committee, C.W. Driver, and Dave Kiff, and Steve Badham, and your staff. I'm so much looking forward to seeing the rest of this come to pass. And if I could just add one additional comment, as the former chairman of the board of the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce, thank you for standing tall for the 104th edition of the Christmas Boat Parade. And Councilman Rosansky, as you said, there are great days ahead. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there other public comment?
My name's Craig Badley, fellow, the Madam Mayor and distinguished council members. I've been a citizen of Newport Beach for about 30 years, and I've attended the Christmas Boat Parade virtually every year. Small children, now they're all tall, grown up, but I would hope that in the spirit of Christmas, that we would all come out and support the parade this year, the merchants, the restaurateurs, thousands of people that come here are looking forward to that, and I would hope there'd be a full participation.
Thank you. Is there other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to our reorganization, our certificate, certification of the general municipal election results.
Madam Mayor, may I just make one comment?
Yes.
As we're getting ready for that, to follow on the last speaker's comments, I'm certain that we're going to have a wonderful boat parade this year. It's looking like we're gonna have great participation in terms of the numbers of boats. Plans are moving ahead full blast, and so, please, come enjoy the parade this year. Thanks.
Next, we have to adopt the resolution declaring the results of the general municipal
Yes, before you is the resolution, and it also has been amended to certify the election from the November 6th general election, and with that, I'll actually read the title, and then you can make the motion. Resolution number 2012-122, a resolution to the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, reciting the fact of the general municipal election held on Tuesday, November 6th, 2012, declaring the result, and such other matters as provided by law.
Is there any discussion?
Move the item.
Is there any public comment? All right, everybody, raise your hand.
Motion carries unanimously.
You know this is gonna be the covered picture. All right, and now the administration of the oath of office?
May I have four elected council members, Curry, Selich, and newly-elected council I'll now do the oath or affirmation of allegiance for public officers and employees. If you would raise your right hand, please. Aye, please state your name. Do solemnly affirm
Solemnly affirm.
that I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution.
and the Constitution of the State of California
The Constitution.
against all enemies
Against all enemies.
foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
to the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution.
and the Constitution of the State of California
To the Constitution.
that I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation.
without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
and that I will well and faithfully
That I will well and faithfully.
discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter Congratulations.
And now, we will have the election of the mayor?
This is the time for the election of the mayor. All members of the city council are on an equal basis to nominate and elect. The same procedure is also followed for selection of the mayor pro tem. To clarify, nominations do not require a second, they are debatable, cannot be amended or reconsidered, and a majority vote is required to elect. The motion to close nominations does require a second, it is not debatable, or can be reconsidered and requires a two-thirds vote. If there is more than one nomination, the voting will be done by paper ballot and the results read at the conclusion of the balloting. If there is only one nomination, the voting should have been done by electronic voting equipment, but we will do it by hand vote tonight. Nominations are now open, do I hear any nominations?
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
I would like to nominate Keith Curry to serve as mayor this next year. I think Keith has shown his strong leadership capabilities, his financial wisdom, and would be an excellent choice to lead us through what I hope would be the last phase of the reductions that we will face.
Are there any other nominations?
I move to close the nominations.
Second.
For that, is there public comments on the nominations?
Ron Winship, Corona Del Mar. I'd only come to this dais if Keith Curry was being nominated for mayor. There's a reason for that. Well, actually, not. I want to thank all the members of the city council that do answer my emails, by the way. But Keith was, has been through the years, really almost religious in answering my emails, and as a result, I have to be his personal carry the flag for him for mayor of Newport Beach. I think he deserves that. He didn't have to answer my emails, like a lot of other electeds don't do, but he did. And as a result, I want to thank him very much from the bottom of my heart.
Your other public comment?
Is that all in favor? Congratulations, Councilmember Curry, you are the new council, you are the new mayor for 2013-14.
Let me say, first of all, thank you to my colleagues. The, we'll speak more of that in a few moments. The next item is the election of the mayor pro tem. We will follow the same process. May I open the floor for nominations for mayor pro tem?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to place a nomination, Rush Hill, for mayor pro tem. Rush fully looks the part. And he certainly has earned the part, and I'm very happy to nominate him.
Move to close the nominations.
Move to close nominations, are there no further nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor, can I close nominations? Is there any public comment?
Is there any public comment on the nomination of Mr. Hill to be mayor pro tem? Seeing no public comment, all in favor of Rush Hill for mayor pro tem, please raise your hand.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. All right.
Congratulations, yes, if you can please.
We are, we are now at that point where we can decide the seating arrangements for the council, and as those of you may know, that is determined by seniority. And so, Councilmember Daigle, I believe you are the senior council member. Would you care to change your seat? Okay. Councilmember Selich?
Good here.
And let me see what we got here. Councilmembers Gardner and Hen, you're, everybody's good? All right, Tony?
I'm not on the end.
There you go. You're already making progress. Okay, we'll, we'll deem that concluded. And now, the first act of the new mayor is always one that I consider to be among the most pleasant things that a mayor gets to do, and that is to recognize the accomplishments of the outgoing mayor, and to honor her with a plaque for her service to the city. When it comes to Nancy Gardner, I simply cannot think of a single person in this entire city who more personally embodies the character, the history, the ethos, the values of Newport Beach, the Nancy Gardner. She is the most down-to-earth person, she is the most fair leader, and this year she tackled some tremendously complicated issues. We just resolved the, or hopefully we resolved, the issue of harbor fees, and she led the city through a very tumultuous time to do that with grace and with skill. During the course of this year, we completed the Thailand's capital plan. We approved it a couple of weeks ago, sitting in for, say, a five-year plan for a $29 million investment in the Thailand's. We've reorganized our committees, and she took a personal role in how we did that, so that we were able to get to greater efficiency, to move forward on our neighborhood revitalization projects, all of which have made great progress during her tenure as mayor to revitalize our city. She has been tenacious in her leadership on our labor agreements. We've had difficult but successful negotiations, and she was, unlike some of our neighboring communities, she led in a way that brought our workforce together with management to work through these negotiations in a positive way, to get accomplishments that supported both our employees and the needs of the city budget and the taxpayers, and I think that's a great accomplishment that she doesn't get mentioned for enough in terms of her leadership on labor issues. We saw this year, the second year, the Fourth of July changing the peninsula. Mayor Gardner was instrumental in that, and as you know, she spent some time in the dunk tank down on the peninsula. And that, that along with the, with the Meet the Mayor paddle boarding, I think will go down as two signature events, certainly that I can't, nor do I want to, replicate coming forward. So Nancy, it's on behalf of all of us here on the city council, who have been privileged to serve with you. We were particularly privileged to have your leadership as mayor this last year, and I think everybody in Newport Beach who knows and trusts you, and was just delighted that you are our mayor, that you are the embodiment of Newport Beach, and that you led with such great skill and leadership during the course of 2012. So congratulations for a great tenure. Nancy, let me recognize you for some remarks.
Well, some of what Keith said was actually true. I just, I look at other cities, and I just feel how fortunate I have been to serve with the people I have. There's such, such a putting aside of ego and putting the city first, and as I think Mike talked about, we disagree, we put it behind us. I feel very fortunate that. I feel very fortunate that we have such an excellent staff. I don't know that they always get the credit they deserve. So being mayor with a group like this just isn't that tough. So thank you.
Thank you. Let me recognize next councilmembers Selich, and then councilmembers Petros, to make some comments upon your reelection.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to recognize my family who's here this evening. First of all, my beautiful wife Lynn, who supports all my efforts being on the city council, and, whoops, my granddaughter and my son-in-law. Where'd they go? Oh, they went outside, so I guess she's a little bit restless. Here she comes. And my daughter, my daughter Adrian, my son-in-law Abe, and my granddaughters, they're somewhere. First of all, I'd like to say that I'm honored to have been elected to serve on this city council for another four years. Seven and a half years ago when I first took this seat, I, I knew that there was a possibility that I would be able to serve eleven and a half years on the city council, and at the time, it seemed like such a long time. And there were so many things that I had in my mind that I wanted to see accomplished. And here we are now, it's down to only four years left, and I want to try and make the most of those four years. As others have commented on here this evening, we've had many accomplishments over the last six to nine years with the, basically the core of the council you see before you has, has been together for at least the last six years. And we've accomplished many things, but yet there is more, more to do and more things to accomplish. It's been a great city council to work with, working with Councilmember Rosansky, and Councilmember Webb sitting in the audience. It's really been an honor and a pleasure for me. And I think what I'd like to do is just go over, I wrote down ten goals that I would like to try and work on over my last four years on the, on the city council. I didn't get the time because I didn't have an opponent to go out and make a lot of campaign promises. And so I think these are some of the things I would have said, you know, had there been a vigorous campaign going on for this office. First of all, I'd like to see us get the airport settlement agreement resolved. We're well on the way to, to that happening. I'd like to see Sunset Ridge Park completed. Councilmember Rosansky was instrumental in getting that started. We've had a large, or a long, hard battle that we fought with the Coastal Commission to get the park approved, and now it's time to get it built. Marina Park, this is going to be a great facility on our bayfront. I didn't realize how important Marina Park was until one day I took a look at the, a map of the bay, and there's very little parkland on the bay. There's a lot of beaches and recreational areas, but very little parkland. So to have a major facility like this on our bay is going to be a great accomplishment for our city. I'd like to see us take a sensible approach to dealing with sea level rise and the seawalls that the city owns around the bay, primarily on Balboa Island. We've taken some initial steps on that, but we really need to make some significant progress on dealing with those issues. We need to figure out how we're going to finance and pay for them. The public seawalls are a large expense. The West Side Newport improvements is part of the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee. I've had the pleasure of serving on some of the neighborhood committees out there, primarily the landscaping of Coast Highway and Balboa Boulevard. And I'd like to see those things accomplished, as well as some of the other things that were started out there. One thing that's received a lot of attention lately is the whole issue of bicycle safety, and the attention it's received has been unfortunate attention, but I would like to see us embark on a comprehensive bicycle plan for the city. I've looked at what some other cities are doing. Portland comes to mind, and seeing the comprehensive approach they've taken to creating bicycle trails and pathways in their city that are safe. We have a lot of cyclists in the city, both recreational and travel-wise, and I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but maybe when our goal-setting session starts here next month, that it's a subject that we can discuss. Another thing that I'd like to see accomplished before I leave the council is the reconstruction of the Park Avenue Bridge on Balboa Island, and the dredging and the seawall rebuilding on the Grand Canal. Those are, that's a big item, would take a lot of coordination and luck perhaps to get that done in the next four years, but I'd sure like to try. Like to see us finish up our implementation program for the local coastal plan, so that we can take control of our own destiny in issuing coastal permits and not be held hostage to the Coastal Commission. It's been evidenced by things that have happened recently with Sunset Ridge Park and Marina Park. And then finally, I'd like to see us continue with our city reorganization and our pension reform. We've made great strides, and we have a little bit more work to do, and like to be a part of that and see that accomplished. And I have one final goal. It's more than ten, and it's kind of a personal one, and I'd like to get my photo redone that hangs on the walls. Now, you might think that's funny, but I was having a sofa reupholstered over in Costa Mesa, and I went into the store and ordered the, ordered the material and everything, and I went back a couple of weeks later when it came in and to give it approval, and the person there, he was a fellow probably in his thirties, and he said, hey, I was just down at the, at the Newport Beach Library, and I saw that your son was on the city council. I didn't know that seven and a half years on the city council would age you that much, so that's what they'd like to do, is get my photo redone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Personally, I'm never going to look better than I looked in 2006, so. Councilmember Petros.
Mayor Curry, I would first like to acknowledge my wife, Kristen, who's in the audience. This is going to be a long and fun and engaged process, and I'm glad that you're with me on this, Kristen. And I also would like to acknowledge my daughter, who flew in from the University of Washington today to join us. Erica is, is with us. I find it almost prophetic that Father Peter Haynes provided the invocation, because over twenty-one years ago, Father Haynes married Kristen and me. So this is quite a, quite a nice way to start this occasion. Thank you, Father Haynes. This is a familiar feeling for me. My father used to collect classic Corvettes, and I remember as a pimply-faced sixteen-year-old, the first time he would let me drive his classic and vintage Corvette, this is what it feels like, getting behind the wheels of a very high-powered vehicle and taking off. I can promise you that I'm going to want to go fast. I'm one of those ready aim, or ready-fire-aim guys, and so I'll need you to help slow me down, but we're going to do this together. We're going to do this as, as it was quoted in the paper today, we're going to do this as a family. I know that I am here because of your confidence and your vote for me, and that this is a community of Newport Beach, that there may be factions, and I'm finding out as a result of today's earlier meeting, that yes, all politics is local, and that politics is a contact sport. And I'm ready for that challenge, because I know that at the end of the day, what's best for Newport Beach always rises to the top like cream. I'll hold my comments on goals. We will see those unfold, but I can share with you that many of the objectives and initiatives that my colleague, Councilman Selich, spoke about are wonderful to hear about, and I am very encouraged to hear about that, that type of ambitious initiatives. I would be remiss if I didn't end, though, on saying a very, very special thank you and acknowledgement to Councilman and Mayor Steve Rosansky. You have been a great help to me through this transition. This is all new, but you have made it a very, very open process, and I'm forever grateful for your service to the City of Newport Beach and to my coming onto this council. And truly, I look forward to working with all of you in the community of Newport Beach for Newport Beach. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Hill?
I would just like to, as long as everybody's stating goals, I would like to state my goal for the next two years. If they could just spell my name right on the television program, that would be helpful.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, first of all, let me say that there is no greater job in America than to be mayor of Newport Beach, and I thank my colleagues for the opportunity to serve in this position once again, and I truly am humbled and appreciate their confidence in allowing me to do this. Let me also recognize my wife, who's here, Pamela, my daughter Julie, and my son-in-law Tony, who are, who have always been great supporters and who are here, here again tonight for me, and I truly appreciate that very much. Thank you. Let me assure you that Newport Beach is in great shape, and we are going to have a great year going forward. You're going to see us move forward on some civic improvements at Marina Park and Sunset Ridge Park that have been years in the making and are years past due, to fulfill those promises to our community. You're going to see us continue to take strong and purposeful action to manage our city in the most efficient way possible, to get every dollar of value for the taxpayers, and to preserve our strong financial base that has been the hallmark of Newport Beach, and one of the reasons why we are one of only five cities to have an underlying AAA bond rating in the entire state of California. We're going to continue to strengthen that. You're going to see us invest to make this a better community in the harbor with our $29 million capital plan. That will make good on the promises that were made as we adjusted these fees that have been set for 23 years, so that we have the resources to really meet the needs of future generations as it relates to our harbor. You're going to see us support the economic growth and development of our community, as we've been very fortunate to weather through this recession with, on the whole, property values still rising. But that's because of the investments that many of our private sector neighbors and friends have made during the course of this time to keep our community strong and vibrant. We're going to support a strong economy and a strong and vibrant economic situation for our city. Now, today, it's altogether fitting that we meet here in this room, and that we celebrate this as a community, because this is really going to be the hub and the center of our community for generations to come. It's special in many ways. We get to thank Councilmember and former Mayor Rosansky for his eight years of service, and for his particular accomplishments in making this possible. We welcome Tony Petros, who is going to be a great addition to the team, and of course, I could not serve with any better, stronger, or more capable colleagues than the city council that you have seen fit to elect over the course of the past several years. Councilman Selich, I think, has put it most aptly, that this is going to be a true community and civic center, one that draws families to the park, which will be, by the way, the fourth-largest park in our city when it's completed and opened. The expanded library, children's area is more than 17,000 square feet. Do you know, a million people a year go to that library next to the beach. It's the most popular attraction in our entire community. We need to make the investment that we're doing so that it continues to serve them well. We'll have walkers on the park trails, art lovers in the civic green. We'll have lecturers just across the way there in our civic hallway. We'll have a place for our many cert volunteers in the emergency center. We'll have a new dog park for the many dog owners who've looked for a place to, to come. But most of all, here in the center of the city, we'll have a place where the entire community can come together, whether it's for a concert, or to enjoy the park, or to come here for a civic function and watch democracy at work. And we've done some stuff with transparency. You'll know that's what all the windows are about, so, so they can all keep a, keep a good eye on us. It's going to be much more than just a city hall. Now, naysayers will mischaracterize its cost and what's included in the project, even when they know better. But I think, and you'll be the best judges yourselves, that within a very short period of time, I think people in our community will have a tremendous amount of pride in the civic center and what it represents, not only for the history of Newport Beach, but for the future of Newport Beach. Every time somebody walks through these 15 acres, that thought will come to them. This was a journey that began five years ago with the approval of Measure B. Our architect, Boland Swinski and Jackson, and construction manager, C.W. Driver, were brought on board, and I think they have both done exemplary jobs, and the proof is what you see tonight and what you'll see as the additional buildings begin to open in a few weeks. Tonight, we dedicate our new council chamber. Tonight, we dedicate our new council chambers and all future council meetings will be held in this location, but as you can tell, we're not quite done. We're not able to offer site tours yet, but I encourage everyone to check out the community room across the way. There's some refreshments over there if you'd like and get a sense of the space and the opportunities for what this can mean for our community. We've already set the date and time for a community open house in celebration once we're confident all the furniture has been moved in and the lights and we can fix this voting thing and we're all ready to go. And it's going to be Saturday, May 4th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 o'clock. So put it on your calendars and plan to be here. It's going to be a great celebration of the Newport Beach community. I hope that the civic center is something that you take pride in and that you enjoy as you come back to see it. I look forward to a great year next year with our staff and I just want to congratulate and thank them because Dave and Steve and the entire team have done a tremendous job, not only in making this building a reality, but in making our city the great shining city that it is. And these are days where we don't often stop and thank our public employees or even recognize the value of what they do. But this would not be the same city if we did not have the employees that we have who work day in and day out to keep Newport Beach the way it is. So I just want to thank them for their contributions to our great community. And with that, unless there's anyone else who wishes to speak, I understand we do have a memorial adjournment. Councilmember Gardner?
Yes, I'd like to close the meeting in memory of Don Roberson. Don was one of our good, very good high school athletes. He married Anne Broaring, whose father actually signed our original charter. So a family that has deep roots. And Don was in real estate, which means he had his ups and downs and you never knew when you saw Don, whether it was an up or down. He just had, one of those people that, hey, life is good. And the last time I saw him, he had just put on a wonderful surprise party, birthday party for his wife. She was totally flabbergasted. It was great to see them together. And he died too soon, so our best wishes go to his family and.